Welcome, everybody to. Give me a second here. Welcome, everybody, to the November the eighth Town Council informational work session. Let the record read that all six members of the town council are present. At this time, we'll pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On that note, I wish you a happy Veterans Day to everybody. At this time, we're going to go into closed session. I need a motion to close the work session under statutory authority of the Maryland annotated code pursuant to general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B subsection seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice regarding the town council candidate selection process. Is there a motion?
Exactly. Everyone is automatically muted when we come back in.
Checking.
All in favor? Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes had it. Just that we all made it back is good.
The breakout room is a thing of beauty.
I'll let.
It's like, wow, never mind.
Who would have known?
Thank you, Dale.
Buddy? Okay, everybody here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Next, at the the next meeting, I plan to introduce ordinance oh dash twenty one dash seven. An ordinance to expand the admission amusement tax for the town of Chesapeake Beach to include sports betting for class A one, A two, class B one, and B two licenses. Real quick, I'm probably the best person to to give an overview of this if you don't already know. Obviously, one of our key jobs as as elected officials is to protect the town coffers. As I've said in some meetings, if anybody was paying attention, I foresee a a downtick in in revenue once the sports gambling comes to the 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 lone brick and mortar, you know, establishment in town. And the reason I say that is because there, while we do receive an A and A tax on the electronic bingo gross receipts, we receive nothing on the sports gambling. And my logical fear is that, which has been confirmed by people in the industry, is basically an example, let's just say, you know, a person comes into to town with a hundred dollars, or they live in town, a hundred dollars discretionary money for electronic bingo slots. Well, what we may very well see is is said person, you know, spending seventy five dollars on the slots and twenty five on a hockey game. So what would happen as you, you know, proceed in the course of the the year is that particular example, which I don't think is it is a stretch. It could even be worse. But that particular example, how it applies to the the town of Chesapeake Beach is we we budget for one point five million annually in A and A tax revenue. So if you were to put a twenty five percent hit on that, we're talking three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar a year downtick in our revenue stream. So the the logical choice is for the town to have the same amusement and admission tax on the sports gambling in the establishment that I mentioned. And we've, you know, I've met with the controller's office. It's perfectly legal. So we're good to go there. It's basically in order to do this, our job as a council is to introduce and then pass an ordinance. That's what we need to do. So that's it in a nutshell. And beginning with Valerie, do we have any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, I fully support this, but I do have some questions. They did a really good job, Pat, explaining it. So my questions are this. So the expectation is to maintain the same rate at one half of one percent. Is that correct?
That's the rate it'll be, yes.
And I remember well over a decade ago, you and I approached the comptroller about raising that one half of one percent. And I still have the letter turning us down. So is there a chance that that can be discussed also?
Well, I guess that's for one, to educate the, you know, the the council. There was an attempt by a prior town council to increase that amusement and admission rate from half of one percent to three quarters of one percent. We we did get kicked back from the state and the and the bill that provides the electronic bingo tax in in town was it was amended that next year to prohibit the town council from increasing that rate. So does that help Valerie?
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, I think it's good to, you know, any sort of history that we can lay out is always beneficial, I think, to the council members. Is this the only action that has required the passing of this in order to implement the one half of one percent?
This is this is the only, this is the only action required of the town council.
Are there any other actions further upstream that are required? Let's think about county or state.
Right now, I would say if there's any other actions are needed from us, I'll be, I'll be the first guy in the state of Maryland on top of it. You can take that to the bank.
When is your expectation that this will be implemented?
I mean, as soon as you're allowed to take a, you know, place a bet, I mean, this is going to be implemented into town as soon as we pass it in December. So we'll be good to go on our end. We probably all read the news articles, how Governor Hogan is pushing the folks up in Annapolis to get this sports gambling thing going. So, you know, the people can bet on football games and stuff. So I don't know when it'll be actually up and ready. But I know that the establishments are ready to go. They're just waiting. So, you know.
Okay, so there's no real impediments to implementing this further down the line. That's great.
No, it's it's something that I've been advised that we need to do as soon as possible.
Right. And and we don't really have a feel, whether it be the twenty five dollars on the hundred or thirty dollars on the hundred or what have you, right? Everything right now is just sort of our best estimate.
Yeah, I don't think we'll really have a have a good feel until after two years. You know, the first year, I I think probably, you know, the whole awe of having sports betting and a lot of other stuff will be there, then it'll it'll die down. And but this prevents the town of Chesapeake Beach from losing revenue.
Okay, and the way this is structured, um, the 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 ordinance, I know, I know you've done it most likely with our lawyer, but it's not explicit as to the rate. So there's no way that they could come back with a quarter of a percent or anything different. Is that correct? I mean, there's no language that we ought to add to be more explicit about what our expectations are.
Yeah, right now, the admission amusement tax in the town of Chesapeake Beach is one half of one percent. It would take an action on our part to lower that, and I don't intend to do that.
And so this just ties directly into that with no further, no other language required, right?
That's correct.
I understand. And that's the way this is written then. So it just becomes, it's incorporated into our admissions and amusement tax. Um, Pat, you did a great job answering my all my questions. I fully support this, and I think this is the proper way to go for our town funding. And I think it's fiscally responsible. Well done.
Thank you. And Charlie?
Well, I think it's great. We're getting out ahead of this, too. But I feel like this would be harder to do after the fact. I I don't know if it's appropriate in this meeting, so feel free to just say we don't know. But, you know, one of the big things I keep reading about with sports gambling is the is the notion that it can be so remote, you know, that that people can do it on their phones. And at that point, it becomes a question of of where the where the gambling is being processed. So there was a whole article slash piece on NPR about whether apps, you know, kid, people sitting in that stadium would have to turn their location services on so that when they're placing bets on a game, that people know they're in actually in DC at the game as opposed to being somewhere else. Is any of this relevant, or are we just like everyone else, we're going to figure that out when it happens? And for now, what we're focused on are bets placed in person at the whatever, you know, the casino or at the sports book.
No, Charlie, I I've looked into this in in length, and, you know, you can see the ordinance is written that it applies to, you know, class A and class B licenses. They're the brick and mortar. There will be such a thing as, you know, mobile app, which I think, you know, most people use. And, yeah, I mean, if if somebody were to sit in their house and use their mobile app with, you know, DraftKings to bet on a hockey game, that has nothing to do with the town. We're not, we're not intending to tax anything from 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 the mobile apps. And that would be, that would be impossible to do anyhow. This is strictly for, you know, you know, gamers who either live in town or come into town and 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 frequent the, you know, the the one establishment that will offer both. And it gives us an opportunity to collect, you know, revenue from sports gaming in a brick and mortar establishment.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, I was not making the assumption we we could tax someone betting on DraftKings just because they're geographically sitting within town borders. I was more thinking about whether the whether the, you know, a a license holder in town adds some sort of a remote application-based feature, but they're still collecting revenue on the bets being made. And and I guess we just don't know that.
Yeah, we're not going into that. But I just want to explain in full because I've spent a lot of time on this. But no, thanks for your question, Charlie.
Okay.
Larry?
Um, a couple of my questions have already been asked, but I'll just repeat a couple of them. One is whether or not, if the council approves this ordinance, whether it needs any additional approvals by state?
No.
Okay. So if the council approves this, it it is in effect whenever the sports betting comes to town?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the second, I guess, just as a comment, I thought I read the other day that there appears to be some delay in the state approving sports betting. Did anyone else hear that, or did I misunderstand?
Well, no, what it is, Larry, is there's two, two bodies, two state committees, if you will, that have to, you know, sign off on this and sign off on that. And they've been spending a couple of weeks just, you know, throwing the can over to the other table, over to the other one. And the governor's been saying, hey, guys, get your act together, and let's get this thing rocking and rolling. So, yeah, no, you read what I read, and and the this is typical for how things work up at Womples for something like this, but they'll they'll get it together, you know, and very soon.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Uh, yeah. Isn't this part of an ordinance that the town banned a while back? Didn't we ban sports betting in town?
Yeah, the the good question, the the council passed an ordinance that that did prohibit sports gaming in town. The state, in turn, went ahead and, you know, they, you know, they can, you know, if they make a law and says and and say it's it's legal, then we can't do anything about it. So we did our part, you know, we followed what the voters, you know, you know, wanted. We we did our job, and they went ahead and implemented sports gambling in in one institution in town anyways. So now that it's going to be here, we need to tax it.
Well, everybody knows where I stood on the sports betting part of that ordinance. Certainly was in favor of it. And I would strongly recommend that this body change that 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 rule prohibiting it in town along with voting in, you know, this ordinance that you have for us today. Does everybody kind of agree with that? Does that make sense? We shouldn't have a law on the books prohibiting it if we're going to put a law on the books, you know, saying how we're going to tax it?
Well, I guess before I turn it over to Todd, I'm going to say, you know, you know, it's, it wouldn't be good business to mix the two. And and secondly, I don't know that it would be good business for we of the town council to try to, you know, retract what we already passed, especially given the results that the voters gave us in a referendum. But I think your question does go deeper. And Todd, I think, you know, Greg's last part was was basically, you know, we're we're, you know, implementing a tax on something that we prohibited a couple of months ago.
No, I mean, you're you're right. I mean, basically, it's the theory of law is known as preemption, that the state law is a it preempts the local municipalities. And so the state law will control. So even though the, and basically what the original ordinance that was passed by the town was something independent of of state law. I mean, obviously, you know, if state law came in and said, well, and that's one of the reasons why they did it, rather than going from municipality to municipality or area to area. They said, no, we're going to change state law to make sure that we can, in essence, change all the laws throughout the state. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, exactly why it was done in that manner. So, but, you know, Mr. Morris, I think you're right. Maybe just to clean it up, the fact that, you know, here we have an ordinance that, you know, we've passed it, but the state law says, well, you know, we're going to do it anyway. Maybe it would be better to just to at least clarify, you know, the the ordinance to to make sure it it is not inconsistent with state law.
We can, we can tackle that in the future.
Well, I'm not sure I'm in support of voting this in without making a change to what we have on the books. I really don't care. I mean, I, we, we know the state can come in, we've known all along the state can come in and do anything they want there with that stuff. And I and I strongly urge this body to not include that sports betting aspect of that ordinance. Now, here we are, being asked to vote on something that that we, you know, taxing on something that we, as a body, voted against against. So, you know, that's how I feel about that. I'd like everybody to think about that. Todd, I, there's, just on a low level, regardless of the state, I mean, what what's the harm in changing the ordinance regarding prohibiting the sports betting, the sports betting?
Uh, you know, at some point in the future, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, you know, any harm at all. I would request that, you know, if we do that, we put that on something in the future because, you know, I think, you know, they would like the sports betting ordinance to go forward, which since then, which does have a little bit more of an urgency and priority. But 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 the other one is basically just the cleaning up our books of saying, okay, we have an ordinance that's no longer effective because of the state. So, you know, if you wanted to clean it up, we could certainly do that in the future. But, you know, I think that's that's more of a future item that we could be looking at.
Well, I certainly don't understand that logic, but I'm going to move on. Spare me a second here. I have a question, a general question about this ordinance. If any of my colleagues aware that this ordinance was forthcoming? Anybody have partaking in this? Because did I miss something? Because this is the first time seeing this. And I very well may have missed an email, or there might be something in the box, and I apologize to that.
This is, Greg, this is an introduction. I mean, we haven't even introduced the ordinance yet.
Well, you stated, Mr. Mayor, that you're going to introduce it. We're going to introduce it at the next meeting, you know, and I'm just saying that just as one of seven elected officials, I don't know anything about this. I'm in favor of it. Don't get me wrong. There's just a procedure in all this. And for the last time, you know, regarding banning the sports betting, we really need to, you know, I'm not comfortable leaving that on the books, but just to move on, I wanted to touch base on something that Valerie mentioned. And and I know that this ordinance doesn't address what we're, you know, fully, our full measure of being able to tax the 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 admission and amusement taxes. And it is a separate issue. And the story of lore, when, how long ago was it now that the old comptroller said, no, you can't take town, you can't have a bigger slice of that, even though the county does get one and a half percent? The county gets one and a half percent, and we get one half percent. Something, something has never added up quite right to me there. So, you know, I I'm certainly a fan of discussing matters, and Brownies is a good example of that. But what's the harm in our, well, and this is really for you, Mr. Mayor, because you're the president of the council, you're you're up on that level with these folks. Why aren't we asking them for more than a half of a percent? Why aren't we asking them that times have changed and that when when they made this ruling of, somebody let me know how long ago that was. There's no harm in asking again, just to make sure. That's just doing our due diligence. Because if they were to agree to go to one percent, maybe we're not worried about enacting this this ordinance. But again, I know they're separate issues, and I would like a commitment from from the mayor to, you know, at the right time, you know, to ask about that half a percent again. I I know I had asked Mr. Miller, Senator Miller, about it a couple of years ago. But it's something that's worthwhile asking.
adds some sort of a remote application-based feature, but they're still collecting revenue on the bets being made. And, um, and I guess we just don't know that.
Yeah, we're not going after that. But I, I just want to explain in full because I've spent a lot of time on this. But no, thanks for your question, Charlie.
Okay.
Uh, Larry?
Couple of my questions have already been asked, but I'll just repeat a couple of them. One is whether or not, uh, if the council approves this ordinance, whether it needs any additional approvals by state?
No.
Okay. So if the council approves this, it, it is in effect whenever the sports betting comes to town?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, then the second, I guess, just as a comment, I thought I read the other day that there appears to be some delay in the state approving sports betting. Did anyone else hear that? Or did I misunderstand?
Well, no, what it is, uh, uh, Larry is, um, there's two, two bodies, two state committees, if you will, that have to, you know, sign off on this and sign off on that. And they've been spending a couple of weeks just, you know, throwing the can over to the other table, over to the other one. And the governor's been saying, hey, guys, get your act together and let's get this thing rocking and rolling. So yeah. Yeah. Now you read what I read and, and they'll, um, this is typical for how things work up at Walco's for something like this, but they'll, they'll get it together, you know, and very soon.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Uh, yeah. Isn't this part of an ordinance that the town banned a while back? Didn't we ban sports betting in town?
Yeah, the, the, um, good question. The, the, uh, the council passed an ordinance that, um, that did prohibit sports gaming in town. The state in turn went ahead and, you know, uh, they, you know, they can, you know, if, if they make a law and says, and, and say it's, it's legal, then we can't do anything about it. So we did our part, you know, we followed what the voters, you know, you know, wanted. Uh, we, we did our job and they went ahead and implemented sports gambling in, in one institution in town. Anyways, so now that it's going to be here, we need to tax it.
Well, everybody knows where I stood on the sports betting part of that ordinance. Certainly was in favor of it. And I would strongly recommend that this body change that, that, that rule, prohibiting it in town along with voting in, um, you know, this ordinance that you have for us today. Does everybody kind of agree with that? Does that make sense?
Well.
We shouldn't have a law on the books prohibiting it if we're gonna put a law on the books, you know, saying how we're gonna tax it?
Well, I guess before I turn it over to Todd, I'm going to say, you know, you know, it's, it, it wouldn't be good business to mix the two. And, and secondly, I don't know that it would be good business for we of the town council to try to, you know, retract what we already passed, especially given the results that the voters gave us in a referendum. But I think your question does go deeper. And Todd, I think, you know, Greg's last part was, was basically, you know, we're, we're, you know, implementing a tax on something that we prohibited a couple of months ago.
No, I mean, you're, you're right. I mean, basically, it's, uh, the theory of law is known as preemption that the state law is, uh, it preempts the local municipalities. And so the state law will control. So even though the, and basically what the original ordinance that was passed by the town was something independent of, uh, of state law. I mean, obviously, you know, if state law came in and said, well, uh, and that's one of the reasons why they did it, rather than going from municipality to municipality or area to area. Um, they said, no, we're going to change state law to make sure that we can, in essence, change all the laws throughout the state. So, uh, you know, that's, that's, you know, exactly why it was done in that manner. So, uh, but, you know, Mr. Morris, I think you're right. Um, maybe just to clean it up, uh, the fact that, you know, here we have an ordinance that, you know, we've passed it, but the state law says, well, you know, we, we're going to do it anyway. Maybe it would be better to just to work, at least clarify, uh, you know, the, the ordinance to, to make sure it, it is not, um, uh, inconsistent with state law.
We can, we can tackle that in the future.
Well, uh, I'm not sure I'm in support of voting this in without making a change to what we have on the books. I, I, I really don't care. I mean, I, we, we know the state can come in. We've known all along the state can come in and do anything they want there with that stuff. Uh, and I, and I strongly urge this body to not include that sports betting aspect of that ordinance. Now here we are being asked to vote on something that, that we, you know, taxing on something that we as a body voted against, against. So, um, you know, that's how I feel about that. And I'd like everybody to think about that. Um, Todd, I, there's, just on a low level, regardless of the state, I mean, what, what's the harm in changing the ordinance regarding, um, prohibiting the sports betting, the sports betting?
Uh, you know, at some point in the future, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, you know, any harm at all. Um, I would request that, you know, if we do that, we put that on something in the future because, you know, I think, uh, you know, they would like the sports betting ordinance to go forward, um, which since, which does have a little bit more of an urgency and priority. But, but, but the other one is basically just the cleaning up our books of saying, okay, we have an ordinance that's no longer effective, uh, because of the state. So, um, you know, if you wanted to clean it up, we could certainly do that in the future. Um, uh, but yeah, I think that's, that's more of a future item that we could be looking at.
Well, I certainly don't understand that logic, um, but I'm going to move on. Um, spare with me a second here. I have a question, a general question about this ordinance. If any of my colleagues aware that this ordinance was forthcoming? Anybody have partaking in this? Cause did I miss something? Cause this is the first time seeing this. And I very well may have missed an email or there might be something in the box and I apologize to that.
This is, Greg, this is an introduction. I mean, we haven't even introduced the ordinance yet.
Well, you, you stated, Mr. Mayor, if you're going to introduce it, we're, we're going to introduce it at the next meeting, um, you know, and I'm just saying that just as one of seven elected officials, I don't know anything about this. I'm in favor of it. Don't get me wrong. There's just a procedure in all this. And for the last time, you know, regarding banning the sports betting, we really need to, you know, I'm not comfortable leaving that on the books, but, uh, um, just to move on, I wanted to touch base on something that Valerie mentioned. And, and I know that this ordinance doesn't address, um, what we're, you know, fully, our full measure of being able to tax, the, the, uh, admission in amusement taxes. And it is a separate issue. And the story of lore, when, how long ago was it now that the old comptroller said, no, you can't take town, you can't have a bigger slice of that, even though the county does get one and a half percent. The county gets one and a half percent and we get one half percent. Something, something has never added up quite right to me there. Um, so, um, you know, I, I'm certainly a fan of discussing matters. Um, and, and Brownies is a good example of that. But what's the harm in our? Well, and this is really for you, Mr. Mayor, because you're the president of the council. You're, you're up on that level with these folks. Why aren't we asking them for more than a half of a percent? Why aren't we asking them? Uh, the times have changed and that when, when they made this ruling of, uh, somebody let me know how long ago that was. Um, there's no harm in asking again, just to make sure. Um, that's just doing our due diligence. Because if they were to agree to go to 1%, uh, maybe we're not worried about enacting this, this ordinance. But again, I, I know they're separate issues. Um, and I would like a commitment from, from the mayor to, you know, at the right time, you know, to ask about that half a percent again. I, I know I had asked Mr. Miller, Senator Miller about it uh, a couple of years ago. But, um, it's something that's worthwhile asking not every day and every year, but things change and that, and that, that story of lore that was added, that might have been a decade ago now. And I guess that's just a general comment on that. Um, the, um, I have a question about the issuance of licenses in our town regarding sports betting. And I would, I don't know how, if, if we're can, I, it's really a state, the state's discretion, how they take applications and, and, and issue licenses for this stuff. But I would like to see all of our gambling establishments, at least the three restaurants, um, have equal footing when it comes to getting the sports betting in town when it's available. I mean, any comments on that?
I, I, only thing I can, I can say there is that that's, you know, that's a state issue. There's nothing this council can do about, about that. You know, the state awards their licenses, the state does all of that. That's, that's not a process we're involved in, Greg.
Does it, does it make any difference for us to, that we would want to urge the state to treat, uh, our gaming facilities on equal footing? Cause I've heard that, I've heard to the contrary, the way that this is, this is lining up. And I don't think it's fair to some of the other businesses that are in this, uh, group, um, if you would say, uh, and again, I'm not as, I'm not against, you know, the ordinance, um, I just, uh, I just would like to see the state, I would expect the state to treat all of, uh, you know, our establishments fairly uh, in issuing licenses. And maybe, you know, not wait three years for somebody to get one. They're only going to give one. I mean, I don't really know what the, you know, if there are, if they, how many they can have. Maybe they can only issue one, who knows? But I know that was a lot there. Um, Mr. Mayor, did you have any comments about anything else that I said, I said there?
I think a lot of what you're saying is not relevant to the ordinance here. And, and there's a lot of, um, of what you're saying that did happen up at the state level. And I think everybody's aware of it, but it's not, it's not the town's business. Is the best.
Town's business is not the town's business. I, I don't know why, why, um, we're up at that level in Annapolis, sir, and we, we should be asking those tough questions unless we're just doing what we're told to do. Um, I don't have any other questions about this. Thank you.
And Keith?
Yeah, good evening. I just, uh, a lot of great questions. Some of mine have already been answered, but I have one last one about the class types. So there's, there's four classes, Class A1, A2, B1, B2. Are, are there any other classes or, or?
Yes, Keith, after, after A and B, it, it gets into the, uh, the mobile sports app, you know, part of it.
Okay. All right. So basically those two, I, I did a quick search on it here and I just found reference to As and Bs. But there's no other numbered classes in either of those categories, like A3?
I think, I think, I think C will end up being the, uh, uh, the, the mobile apps.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No, I just wanted to be sure that we had our, our bases covered because.
Yes, I made sure of that.
Okay.
That is somebody sneezing there? Okay. Well, okay. Thanks, Keith. Next, Chesapeake Beach Water Park Electrical Panel Upgrade. Holly, you want to give an overview of this?
Sure. Um, thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Jay to give you more specifics. Um, but basically, uh, the water park is in need of an upgrade to an electrical panel box. Um, this has been determined to be an, an urgent upgrade, similar to the upgrade we made recently at the water park. Uh, this is a repair that we can fit into the maintenance budget for this fiscal year. It wasn't necessarily planned to go within that maintenance budget, but we can fit it in at this time. So we might need to come back to council for, um, an adjustment with, with additional maintenance items later in the year. Um, we have the specifics here listed for the work that's going to take place. And at this time, um, we are going to be recommending in the upcoming town council meeting to issue a contract to JDT out of Dunkirk at the seventeen thousand nine twenty-one.
Very good. Uh, any, any questions, Keith? I'll start with you.
Um, hmm. So, so the replacement of this is just due to normal wear and tear?
Okay.
It's, it's, um, this is in the electrical room. When you first walk in the pump room at the water park, we replaced the right-hand side a couple of years back. And they were, uh, non-corrosive. They were standard metal cabinetry troughs, breakers and everything. And we upgraded that half to stainless. Now we're going to do the other half, if you will. So what was in there originally um, wasn't going to last forever either way. And now to meet today's code, you have to put in non-corrosive, such as stainless cabinets.
Okay. That does make sense. And now that you mention it, I kind of remember, um, y'all talking about that, uh, many years ago or four or five, it seems like. Okay. So now it's just time to do the rest of that. Is that what I'm hearing? Yeah.
Yes. At, at the original time, we line Xed. Uh, we got a few more years out of what was on the left-hand side, knowing this day was coming. We tried to put it off as long as we could. And here we are.
Okay. And then I guess my only other question is, and I don't know anything about electricals work. So tell me if I'm off base here or whatever, but are you building in additional capacity if it's needed in this, in, in this replacement?
There, there was originally a few breakers unused in this cabinet that will go back in there. And there is something that, you know, I don't know, in 25 years, we've never added into this 480 volt. But if we do want to, there's plenty of power there. And there's empty breakers that are going to go back in it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Greg?
Yeah, I don't have any questions about this. Jay, good evening. Uh, just, just, you know, a comment. Uh, I know you, you, you're not the only one that looks at the, those proposals that's at this meeting today either. But sometimes you might have a quote from, from a contractor that's marginally more expensive. But if you really, really define print, you're getting significantly more scope of work. Maybe they're adding something the other company doesn't have, that you find of value. You know, we all look at the bottom line of the price first. Um, and that's just natural. But, uh, you know, studying, uh, it's why you want competitive bids and studying, uh, your close competitors. Uh, sometimes you get, you get lucky, you know, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah. Well, in this, this particular bid, we, we, we put out a very specific scope of work. We, we put out the scope and they bid on it. So it was apples to apples amongst all of them. You know, the only variable really is the labor. There's, there's quite a bit of money just in the componentry of what they're replacing. But we did put out a scope. So everybody bid on the same exact project in this case.
Yeah, sometimes it's not, you know, money too. It's schedule or availability. Uh, some companies have resources, others don't, you know, with lead time on specialty items. And we know we get our share of specialty specs here in town. So, um, you know, if it's just a comment, um, good job on the proposals.
Yeah, I feel, I feel we got pretty, pretty real world competitive bid. A few companies never gave a bid. They did admit they're a little busy, but for, for 20 grand worth of bid, we're, we're within a thousand dollars. So I think, I think we got pretty good competitive quotes.
Thank you. Uh, Larry?
A couple of my questions have already been answered. Uh, just two more. One is, uh, it's apparently we specified Eaton Fulton panels. I'm just wondering how we arrived at that decision?
They're the hazmat rated and they're readily available. So this, this area, when the pool was built, is not considered hazmat environment. It's a separated electrical room. But today, since it's behind the same closed door, they have to be hazmat rated to upgrade them, Larry. So that particular cabinet is one of the ones in the industry.
Okay. And, and that's the only one that we would consider Eaton Fulton?
Yeah, that's the one that we kind of picked out that we want everyone to bid on. We know it's available. We already have them on the other side, if you will. Um, so it, it just narrowed down. We, that was one of the fears. Someone could come in with an inferior grade of stainless or an inferior grade cabinet. So we wanted to spec that ourselves.
Okay. Sure. And I, I know my colleagues on the council will be fascinated by this, but item three says, see attached spec sheets. I didn't see the spec sheets. If you could just send those along sometime, I'd be.
I would like to follow up with that.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie?
Uh, nothing to add from what's been already said.
Thank you. Uh, Valerie?
Uh, so my understanding is that this is in the water park budget. So that's good. It was planned for, right?
This project was not specifically planned for, however, we, we can fit this into the maintenance line item of the budget at this time.
One of the things that we find when we close the water park for the season, which recently happened is we find surprises that will need to be addressed before the opening um, in the coming year. Any surprises at the water park? Based on the closing?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Um, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chesapeake Beach Water Park Aquatic Professional Service Contract. Holly?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is a budgeted item and this is a recurring service that the water park, um, obtains. Um, we've, we've used a company called Allison Associates, which I think town council is pretty familiar with. But basically they're providing all of the training as well as, um, they will come and do, uh, very specific audits um, throughout the season. They take video recordings of our lifeguards. Um, so it's really a risk management um, service that's provided to the town. So we had our mandatory pre-bid meeting today, um, and we will at least have three bidders on that. So we will have the proposals in before the next town council meeting. So we plan to bring that forward as well.
Very good. Okay. Um, and any comments, Valerie? I'll begin with you.
No, you're right. I'm familiar with our last provider, which was Ellison Associates and their, um, their process in the program. Um, and then familiar with their onsite surprise inspections. And the only thing I would encourage is that whoever we do eventually provide this contract to has those surprise inspections because I think it helps maintain the quality of our lifeguarding at the water park. And that's my, really my only comment on this.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie?
Uh, no, nothing out of this one either.
Larry?
Couple of questions. One is, uh, what would the duration of this contract be? One year?
Actually, it's going to be three years with two one-year options to renew.
Okay. And based on that, I'm, I'm a little puzzled. Uh, two of the items here on the, um, ILTP and the instructor level training programs both talk about provided on an as-needed basis. How does one provide a price on an undefined item such as as-needed?
So it, it's not all of the items are actually needed. So if you look at, I can send you the bid form and that might probably answer your questions a little further.
Okay. As, as, if, if you're happy with it, I'm, I'm okay. It just puzzled me as how one could bid on an item that always says as-needed over a three-year period.
Right. So it's a list of services that they provide, um, and we're only paying for them when we need those services. But I can definitely send you that bid form. And I think that might give you some more.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Greg?
Um, I, I don't think I have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Keith?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just one question. And that is, do, do all of these bidders, I mean, include, I guess, online training? It sounded like in, in, over the last couple of years, a lot of the training was provided on, online and, um, and I was just curious in case we're still in that kind of, uh, phase, hopefully not going into our next season.
Yes, some of the training can be completed online, but with the lifeguards especially, um, a lot of that has to be done in person. So they do meet at the county pools and uh, have been able to accomplish that even with the, uh, social distancing and requirements that have been in place. So the majority of, of the actual lifeguard, um, instruction is in person, especially the CPR and the AED training as well.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Um, next, uh, Council Lightning round. Keith?
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to wish you all a great evening and enjoy the holiday coming up. And, uh, that's it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Greg?
Um, yeah, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take this opportunity just to, uh, just to reinforce my support for sports betting in town. And then fully taxing, and I totally get that part of it. I know you've stressed that aspect of it, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just, I'm just a little in a conundrum uh, being asked to vote in favor of taxing something that we explicitly prohibited. That's all. Um, and we just kind of think about it a little bit. Um, I strongly feel that, um, we should, we should think about, uh, changing that prohibition in concert with this, uh, ordinance. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Larry?
I just wanted to, uh, share with my colleagues here on the council, with the exception of my friend, Mr. Fink, that today marks five years to the day since we were elected to council. So congratulations, everybody. It's nice to be still with you all. Thank you.
Good job. Uh, Charlie?
I hate being left out. Just too quick, I, I have a reminder, um, and I'll mention this again in, in our, uh, our council meeting, that we will have a, uh, Walkwell Committee, uh, Walkwell Community Committee meeting on December 20th. Uh, quite a bit of activity there. I will not run through it all now. But if you're interested, uh, please feel free to attend that meeting. I'll have a full report at the, uh, council meeting. And I just want to, what, you know, I've been back and forth a little bit with Holly uh, on some questions around the flooding that we had. And, you know, I think you guys know, we, um, we felt it pretty acutely here at Seagate. Fortunately, there's only one or two significant property damage items in those, um, had to do with, with, with people not really probably taking everything as seriously as they should. I'll sort of leave it at that. But, uh, I am going to be following up with Jay and Holly. I really appreciate your answers. Um, and I just want to learn more because, so, so, so bear with me when I follow up. It has nothing to do with suggesting something wasn't right, quite the opposite. It has to do with knowing what to anticipate and what to prepare for and how we can do that as best we can, because these events are only going to become uh, more frequent and more significant. So I'll close by saying thank you for, uh, all of what was done in preparing for this event and, um, and as how responsive you've been in, in the follow-up questions that, that we've asked. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie?
Uh, yes, um, you know, Charlie just made me think of something um, regarding the flooding, because I could see it from my home. We will need if we call a park um, down 29th Street from Mamaluchia's on the Bayou, any sort of park that needs to be resilient because that whole, um, parking lot was underwater. And we have pictures of it. It's amazing. Um, my other two things is first, I wanted to also salute our veterans and I wanted to remind you that, uh, Veterans Day celebration from the American Legion will be at the, uh, Veterans Park, um, at 10 o'clock, or 1 o'clock on Thursday, 1 o'clock on Thursday. So come on out and, and it'll be nice. And second, I want to remind everyone that, well, we have the comprehensive public, public hearing November 9th tomorrow. So please come out and, uh, uh, voice your comments on what you like, what you may wish to be changed, and any opinion that you may have on the comprehensive plan. That's tomorrow, um, with the planning and zoning public hearing for the comprehensive plan. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Hi. Hold on, is there someone in the audience?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, this is a work session.
Oh, can I, I wanted to ask a question to Valerie.
So I'm, I'm sorry, sir. That's not the proper time.
Okay.
We, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reluctantly to Eric. Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.